Welcome to Scotch Plains, New Jersey. This is Verizon Fios, Channel 22, and Comcast Cable, Channel 34. Scotch Plains Television, your town, your TV.
Scotch Plains Television presents a meeting of the Township Council. And now, from the municipal building, the Scotch Plains Mayor and Council.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome. Hope you're all enjoying your summer. Welcome to the conference agenda meeting of the Township of Scotch Plains, July 22nd, 2014. Ms. Lucina, please.
I wish to make the following announcement to show compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, known as Chapter 231 of Public Laws of New Jersey, 1975. Notice of this meeting was given by adopting an annual schedule of the location, time, and date, sending copies to the Scotch Plains Fanwood Times, the Star Ledger, and the Courier News, posting in the municipal building, and filing a copy with the township clerk within seven days following the annual organizational meeting of this body. If everyone would please rise for the pledge of the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, truthfully beloved, with which it stands one nation, with God, with liberty, and with justice for all.
Ms. Lucina, would you please call the roll?
Mrs. Jelinella?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Mr. Marcus?
Here.
Mr. Vastin?
Here.
Mayor Glover?
Here.
All present and accounted. The next item on our agenda is public comment. Anybody wishing to address the council, I would ask that there'll be only one opportunity for public comment in our conference meeting. I ask anyone who would like to address the council, please come forward, state your name and your address. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Mr. Terry, 1420 Road, 1 Broadway, Road, Scotch Plains. I understand that the architect's report on Shady Rest is out, and I was wondering if there's any plans of having the, Mr. Ross, the architect, give a public presentation of it, or what the situation is with that?
Thank you. I recently received a copy as well. Mr. Giants, may I defer to you since?
Yeah, I'm gonna be gauging the schedule. I'll be gauging the schedule of council, so, but, just a second.
Okay, thank you. Hey, Chief.
Sort of expected to be the end of a long line. Corey Jukes, 353 North Avenue. Sorry, I forgot I'm short and far from the microphone. Corey Jukes, 353 North Avenue. I'd like to speak about the proposed parking restrictions on Homestead Terrace. I've discussed the issue of the proposed Brunner drop-off with other parents, and I've heard a variety of opinions on parking, snow and leaf removal, crossing guards, and general traffic flow around the school, and there are a lot of good points to be considered both in support and in opposition to the proposed plan. With that diversity in mind, I hope that the township and the Board of Education will seriously consider commissioning a professional traffic study to determine the best approach. Although this would incur a cost, it would hopefully avoid the possibility of spending money on construction to implement the proposed drop-off plan, only to have it poorly accepted by the community and ultimately abandoned. The Board could use the study's recommendations to guide their decision without any question of favoring one perspective over another. If the study determines that Brunner's unique placement in the community makes drop-off unrealistic, I hope that alternative solutions will be considered. One possibility might be a brief onsite before-care program which would shift some of the school traffic to an off-peak time while keeping Brunner's services on par with those at other elementary schools. I realize that the issue before the council today is specifically the restriction of parking on Homestead Terrace, but I couldn't find any specifics on what proposed restrictions are on the table. In general, I'm concerned that restricting parking on Homestead would actually be detrimental because those cars will still have to park somewhere, and the restricted parking would force them to parallel streets like Woodland Terrace, creating additional walking traffic across Homestead. Those additional pedestrians might conflict with cars searching for more convenient spots, particularly given the lack of sidewalks on the streets surrounding the school. While I'm personally in favor of some kind of drop-off program, I'm not necessarily a fan of the proposed program, but I'm also not an expert, and my opinion shouldn't determine the township and the Board's policy, which is why I'm hoping that the township will engage a professional to determine the best course to ensure the safety of our students and the integrity of the surrounding neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I thank you for coming out tonight. As you know, that is on our agenda. We have the Chief of Police with us this evening, and it'll be a council discussion momentarily. So please stand by.
My name is Charles Green, 515 Beverly Avenue, Scotch Plains, New Jersey. And my question is about the roof on the Shady Rest clubhouse up there. It's been a long time, we've been trying to get a roof on there to protect it from further damage. Are there any plans to put a roof on?
I'll defer to you once again. I have my own opinion, as you know.
We have the report, I'm not sure if you've seen it, but the report does mention quite a few things that should be done initially, and I believe that is one of them. When Mr. Ross comes in, you know, like I said, hopefully within the next two weeks, the council's available for a meeting to discuss this, and I'll have him lay out all the plans, we can move forward and get that going.
Okay, so basically, we're waiting for Mr. Ross before we can go ahead and put the roof on?
Well, I mean, I think it would be convenient to have him, you know, present the presentation to the public. And the council.
And the council, but I mean, okay, but he is not the defining person of whether we're gonna put a roof on?
No, not at all.
Who is?
Governing body.
Okay.
Mayor and Council.
All right. Thank you.
Marie Leopard, 36 Field Press Drive. I was born and raised in this town, a third generation for me and a fourth for my children. We attended the public schools here, starting with my generation. Most of us went to college. Grandparents, aunts, uncles, cousins, we always were proud to live in a historical colonial There were, in the past, historical house tours, weekly news articles about our history, a wonderful tricentennial celebration, books published about Scots Plains until the last decade. Now, all we think about is ball fields, condos, and townhouses. We've lost some of our historical gems already. You can't read the historical markers that are around town. We have the privilege of housing the first African-American country club, and we're doing nothing as yet to restore it. The Frezy House is on the National and State Register. There are many who feel as I do, no more nonprofit buildings taking up our space and not paying taxes, no more ball fields, no money going to the Cooper Road County Park. You read in the Star Ledger this weekend about the historical trail which is going to go past the Frezy House. Where's the marker? We should have a marker. I was in small Liberty Village today, and there they had historical markers all over the place and signs everywhere which say, "Preserve Liberty Village." They put us to shame.
Thank you for coming out, Ms. Leopard.
Frank Fester, Ramapo Way. Could someone tell me if we have any vacant apartments in the senior housing building complex?
Mr. Jones?
The most recent memo I saw indicated there are none.
None, ever, it's fully empty.
Correct.
And the Frezy House, that property, was taken by eminent domain. What was it taken for?
I wish I had an answer, but I'm gonna defer to Mr. Lara, that predates me.
Yeah, it was, my recollection was that it was for a public purpose, open space or recreation, and it had both uses in the ordinance that authorized the condemnation. So it was for public purpose, open space, and/or recreation.
And are we fulfilling the breadth of that document?
I don't know. My understanding is that it's been used for dog training, canine training, which could be recreation. I don't know whether, as far as I know, nothing else has really been done, other than using it temporarily during Sandy to deposit some debris.
The wood?
Wood, yeah.
Lasted a couple of months. Okay. So that's where we are. We have no intention of doing anything?
No, no, I don't, I, that's, that's...
Or is that, is that the...
No, no, there is...
An outside group?
No, it's, you're referring to the, what we formally refer to, or maybe still refer to, as the Terry, this loose zoo property?
I do.
Okay. The intent has been, and hopefully soon will be, to convert it to a passive park. And we have monies that have been proposed in this year's capital ordinance to do some pollution remediation there, which I think the entire council fully supports. So, hopefully, finally, Mr. Fester, we'll see some progress on that.
Thank you.
Please, sir?
Second time on a different subject. The last council meeting, I was a little upset with the sewer charges as compared to the water charges. And Mr. Tempco took it upon himself to give me a call, and we met, and he explained to me what the situation was, and in all fairness, he said that there's about thirty-six properties in town that the water company doesn't coincide with their billings. And as it turns out, we beat the sewer authority for four years, and at the higher fee is what we should be charged. My brother was nine dollars less, and I think mine was like seventy-five cents, but in all fairness, I'd like to make that statement and appreciate Mr. Tempco's interest.
Well, thank you very much. It's good to hear that Mr. Tempco was right on that. I'll hand out a cup later, Mr. Terry, get some of that money back. Just kidding, just kidding. Anyway, seeing no one else coming forward, we'll just close the public hearing, and we'll move on to, we have no other new business, manager, we discussed, no discussion items from Hugh at this point, and so we have council discussion items, and the first one is the proposed Homestead Terrace parking restrictions. So I believe, Councilwoman Jillian Eller and I attended a meeting that was held by our Board of Education. It was very well attended, and needless to say, this has been an ongoing problem, as Chief Mahoney is well aware of. Tonight, we're to discuss the background of what is being proposed, and I think the chief would be best, Mr. Giants, to give us that background, whichever way you want to handle it, and then the council needs to weigh in on what their thoughts are. We heard certainly a comment from one of our neighbors...
That makes our work...
...who brought some good commentary and some thoughtful concerns.
Mayor, as you pointed out very well, this has been an ongoing issue for several years now. Probably seven or eight years ago, we proposed parking restrictions on Redwood Road for much the same reason that we proposed them on Homestead Terrace, just from a brief historical perspective, and we've worked very closely with the Board of Ed over the years. Unfortunately, Homestead Terrace, I mean Brunner School is probably the only school in town that we have so much difficulty with having any available space for a drop-off because of its location on Westfield Road, being a main thoroughfare. When we proposed the parking restrictions on Redwood Road several years ago, they did wonders for increasing the safety of the children being able to walk on that roadway. Homestead Terrace faces the exact same problem that we had on Redwood Road. As you all know, three years ago, we proposed these very same restrictions on Homestead Terrace. That did not pass the council in lieu of us trying to work with the Board of Education to try to come up with some alternative to restricting parking in order to increase the safety of the students. We did that for three years, including placing a crossing guard at great expense to the township on Homestead Terrace, which is purely residential, where we typically don't use crossing guards. We agreed to do that, we spent the money to do that. I don't believe that it was as effective as it could have been should there have been other restrictions that were put in place. We worked with the Board of Ed for three years on different proposed drop-offs. We implemented a drop-off or two, all of which basically failed. They weren't used the way they were intended to use, the traffic seemed to be worse, and we still had parents and students unloading their cars into the middle of the street, kids walking down the street, cars parked on both sides. The problem is exacerbated in situations, one school starts in September, the leaves fall in October, and we go through a four- or five-month period during school where the road is blocked up by snow and leaves. On that note, our Traffic Bureau does a great job around all the schools, as does the Public Works Department. We prioritize those areas in trying to clear the roadway. This past year, as you all know, we couldn't keep up with it. The situation is still dangerous. One of the problems that I see, and I know, I think I could speak for the Board of Ed, and they agree, some of the comments that were made earlier, there was a traffic study done several years ago, there was proposals put in place for potential drop-offs, additional parking, all of those, and I, on this note, I won't speak for the Board of Ed, but all of those are extremely costly and just did not seem to fit the property there at Brunner School. As a result of three years of attempts to make the area safer, we still feel and are re-proposing the same parking restrictions on Homestead Terrace. What we feel is that having parking only on one side of the roadway would open up the roadway, make it considerably wider so that the pedestrian traffic could walk on one side of the street, not in and out of the cars. It was correctly pointed out, there are no sidewalks in that area, so if we widened the roadway and had an area for pedestrians to walk, the area would be a lot safer for the students.
Thank you, Chief, for that excellent overview. Council, I mean, I don't know if you've read the proposal? Yeah. That was prepared by Sergeant Hernandez under the chief's watch?
I have some things I'd like to say.
And we'd like to get everybody to wait, and so please?
Yes, Mayor. I recall when this came before us previously with regards to the proposed parking restrictions. My only real question is, was this parking restriction this latest attempt? Is the Board of Ed on board with that approach? And if so, I would obviously support this, having spent almost four years now trying to solve this problem.
My conversations that I've had with Dr. Hayes and the last meeting which I was not at, it was basically agreed upon that the proposed drop-off that could have been implemented by the Board of Ed, people were not in favor of, the Board of Ed was not in favor of spending the additional monies to create a drop-off that they didn't feel would be usable, and they did support the fact that if we were to restrict parking, spread the parking out a little bit and increase the safety zone for the students, then they would be in support. Okay.
That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Council, you?
I do have comments, but I would like to defer to Councilwoman Jillian Eller, because I know she, as kids that go to school, I think it would help me understand more, I hear more about what's happening.
I appreciate that, Councilman Marcus. I just, I want to thank Mrs. Jukes for coming up to the microphone. I think that your comments were very poignant. I know that, I recognize a lot of the folks that are here this evening from previous meetings as residents that live around the school, and I believe that, to the best of my recollection, I only see one Brunner parent other than myself in the room. I want to commend our Board of Education president for taking the time to be here tonight. Thank you very much. It's an interesting thing because the situation around Brunner School, oh, and I should say this to you, Sergeant Hernandez did an excellent job taking some significant heat from the public at a meeting. I know that's not a surprise to you, but he was extremely polite and very articulate and very patient, fielding a lot of questions, and he made...
All the days were...
He made the police department and the township look very good.
Thank you.
You're welcome. So, you know, Councilman Marcus, I know that you have had children go through the high school, the high school is there, which is further complicating this, not to make it sound negative, and there's also the traffic heading to St. Bartholomew's and to Evergreen School, all happening kind of at the same time. One of the things that has been discussed is that I almost feel that this is a larger issue than just the Brunner School drop-off. It tends to really rally around the Brunner School drop-off, but so much of what affects Brunner is the fact that that Westfield Road traffic in the morning prohibits, as the chief indicated, a horseshoe kind of situation in the front of the school, and I completely understand that. But to Mrs. Jukes' point, it was very obvious that there was a lot of resistance to the plan that was put forward, and this idea too about blocking off parking, and I see that. It's tough because when the parking gets, when there's streets that you can't park on around the school, it becomes more of a challenge to get to the school. And now, I mean, I've seen it with me and with Anthony even, and now you're walking small children through an even more challenging situation. So I would say this, again, I do not propose to have a solution to the problem, but I do think that the answer is in a more systemic look at this. There are townships that stagger their start time from the high school more than the elementary start time. That's a Board of Education policy, that's not a policy decision that would be guided by this particular governing body. There are ways that I think we should be looking at this, and I do believe in bringing in professionals that have expertise in this area. As far as I see it, there are three really interested parties here. I believe there is a strong majority of students, just based on a very unscientific method, that go to Brunner School from Fanwood. I think a lot of the students who go there are from Fanwood. I know that the mayor and council from Fanwood have an interest in this as well. I know that the Board of Education is very interested in the success and the safety of a plan for there, and I know that every member of this council wants nothing more than children to be safe. So, I would just say, I would be very interested, at the least, to look at that proposal that you said was put together, those proposals in the past. I don't know if there's additional grant money out there. You know, later on in one of the other agendas, we're going to be talking about another proposal that references complete streets. Part of the problem is that we don't have a complete streets policy in Scotch Plains. People don't want sidewalks outside of their homes, and believe me, I completely understand that, I get it. But I'm not sure that restricting parking is the solution, given what I see on a regular basis outside of Brunner School. So, thank you.
Thank you. Please?
Okay. No, I appreciate that. You know, I'm familiar with the area, I went through it several times to try to, you know, physically understand what was being proposed here in terms of the parking restrictions. I mean, certainly, safety is of paramount concern, I mean, there's no question about that, and I certainly want to do the right thing, whatever that is, and I'm sure everybody else up here wants to do the right thing, whatever that is, to aid the situation. I know Councilwoman brought up, and I guess Chief, you raised it, about prior proposals. So I'm not exactly sure what that entails, but certainly it is something that, you know, would be worth considering, I suppose. I see Mr. Whitehouse is here, and we appreciate that. I don't know, as I sit here, precisely what the Board of Ed would like to offer in terms of any input or suggestions. I certainly don't profess to have the solution here, but certainly, whatever can be done to go towards the furtherance of safety for the students and for the parents who have to deal with the situation every day is something that I think we should absolutely consider. One other thing that I would add, and that is, I would just want to be sure, as I sit here, that there has been some meaningful notification to the residents of that area, to the residents of Homestead Terrace. I mean, it's a given that people can check to see what's on the town council agenda, and if there's something of particular interest to them or affects them personally, or where they live, they can ascertain that information, but I think in a situation like this, that maybe we should go a little further, and somebody, whether it comes from the town administration or the police department, the Board of Ed, the PTA, I don't care who it is, kind of go out of their way to reach out to the folks in the area, because I think it's important that we get their input because they are going to be affected by whatever gets done or does not get done in the area, so that is something that I would like to put forward. Whether the residents on Homestead are really aware of what we're doing tonight, we're talking about, I don't know, so that would be helpful. But, one thing I did note in going through the area today, as a matter of fact, Chief, is as you are coming from the direction of Muir Terrace, headed towards Westfield Road, and you pass the path, the first house past that path on the right-hand side, I saw a sign that said, "No Parking," which, if I understand the proposed regulations here, that's what's being proposed. So, what's being proposed is to, I'm sorry, is to allow parking on the right-hand side of the street, once you pass the path, as you're headed towards Westfield Road.
The sign I believe that you're talking about was put there in relation to parking close to the intersection.
Okay.
It was not for the entire side of the street.
I see. Okay, okay.
That the paths and Cedar Brook Terrace on the Homestead side kind of offset each other, and, you know, really state law doesn't allow parking immediately across from an intersecting street, even though this is a path, it's technically a street. So there was signs placed there when the proposed drop-off, a couple of years ago we started, just to try to open up the area nearest the path.
Right, right.
So that would all be adjusted. And the last time we proposed this, we did make notification to the residents on Homestead Terrace, we could see that that's done, you know, prior to the public hearing.
Right, right. Okay. All right, well, you know, I hope to hear some more about it because I'm, you know, I'm learning as we all speak, and I would just say, if it's okay with the mayor, if, I don't want to put Mr. Whitehouse on the spot, but if you do have anything to add, perhaps now would be the time.
Can I just ask a question? Chief, before Mr. Whitehouse speaks, do we have any kind of safe routes to school policy in town? Have we put anything together?
We do not have a policy as yet. I've talked to the manager, I know that the woman who made a presentation about safe streets was here, I've spoken to Chief Trigo in Fanwood about looking at their proposed policy and us adopting something. We have talked about some of the suggestions that the safe streets presentation put forth... presentation put forth would actually, would actually help in this area, such as, you know, even if it was just if we opened the street up and had parking on one side and on the other side of the street, you know, we put a shoulder, you know, pedestrian path per se on, on the other side of the street to try to contain the parents and the children from walking in the middle of the road. You know, our, our goal is to, is to widen the roadway so we don't have cars trying to pass each other where they can't pass each other, where they're both parked. Um, one, one point I think, you know, that I would make because we talk about, uh, enacting parking restrictions. And I don't like to say really that we're, we're making parking restrictions in that area because there's plenty of parking for all the parents and students at Brunner School in that area. The, the, the simple fact is that, like when you go to the mall at Christmas time, not everybody can have the first parking space. So what we're, we are asking, and, and the speaker made a very, very valid point, we are asking the parking to spread out. And if it was even to spread to Woodland and the, and the students could walk down Cedar Brook that we block off to where the crossing guard is, then that would be better than walking in between cars when they were trying to pass each other, getting in and out of the school on Homestead. So we are looking for the cars to just park a little bit further away, walk forty or fifty feet farther so the students would be safe.
Thank you, Chief. Um, Mr. Whitehouse before him, Mr. Jones, do you have any comments?
I have this time.
Well, then, then I, I'll just make a few comments, Mr. Whitehouse, before, you know, hearing from you. I attended that meeting with, um, Colleen, uh, Councilwoman Colleen Gionella. It was a very well-attended meeting. And there were passions running high on both sides of the aisle and both sides of the issue here. I think the Chief has well-articulated that this has been an ongoing problem. And quite frankly, there is no easy solution. I mean, some will argue, the Chief may support, you need to spread the traffic further. Well, I, I don't know when that further stops. And that's one of the concerns that I have. Uh, I've, listening to Councilwoman Gionella, uh, the idea of possibly staggering times, sounds like a prudent one. I know that's done elsewhere, so that we don't have everything hitting, you know, at the same time. Things that maybe should be considered. We had, one of our residents even suggest that. Uh, I think for us tonight, uh, to introduce an ordinance without doing a little more due diligence, I don't think we'd be acting in the best interest of our, uh, community. I know that when I was there, I spoke to Dr. Hayes, I spoke to Mr. Whitehouse, I spoke to, uh, the business administrator, Debbie Saradaki. And I don't think they knew. And, and, well, Mr. Whitehouse will speak for himself, but, but I didn't, I don't think there was a strong consensus there of what's the right thing to do, other than sometimes you got to take a different snapshot of this. And, uh, that, you know, might require having someone, uh, who does this for a living, you know, evaluate, uh, the situation from several angles. Uh, and propose what might be a, a solution that both sides can live with. But if, and if they can't live with it, because you'll never get a hundred percent consensus, but would be the right solution. And one that, you know, uh, people would be able to buy into. I, I just don't see we're there. And I think introducing this, um, I, I just think it's going to create as many problems and issues uh, than it's going to solve at, at the present time. But I'm not talking about cookie-kicking this can down the road. I had asked Mr. James, and I, you may want to comment on this. Following our last meeting, Mayor Marr felt pretty strongly about it too, that we need to regain someone to come in and, and to, uh, give this a sanity check. Uh, I don't know if you've had an opportunity. I see we have a guest in the House. Uh, but we don't get a second chance to make a first impression. And clearly, this thing's been around for a long time. So I'd like to think that we are on the side of, uh, you know, caution. And to your point, Deputy Mayor, safety.
Um, the engineer is here tonight, Bob Lyons, our township engineer. Um, he was involved in both the proposal that was at the meeting that you're referring to and has reviewed this ordinance. So certainly, if you have any questions for him.
Well, first, uh, could I, could I ask one question? So, so what you're, you're saying is that our township engineer has actually been involved in this process and this evaluation and has given recommendations for this?
Um, he, I'll speak to, I'll speak for him because it's in his memo. He believes that it's the appropriate action for resolving this problem.
So we actually have gone beyond just someone's opinion to actually study this issue in depth and including the township engineer and our traffic officer? Yeah, no, I, I just, I don't want the perception to be that we haven't studied this and looked at this from mi- a myriad of angles, uh, prior to this being put forward to, on tonight's agenda. I'm just clarifying for my own knowledge that, in fact, the township engineer has been involved in this process, along with our traffic safety officer. Right? So this isn't just somebody came up with this idea over the weekend and we're voting on it, right?
I, I don't want to imply that to answer, you know, to, to, to just jump in here. You know, in fact, it was I who requested that we get, you know, our engineer involved. And I'm happy, when I saw him outside, that he was involved. And I think all this is good. And, you know, it's consistent with what plan of action that we were all hoping would be taken. But it's a question of how we're going to convey that to the folks that are out there who've been waiting to hear what the next step would be. You know, we have a neighbor in this, which is, you know, Fanwood. And obviously, their children, our children, uh, you know, we have, uh, the Board of Education that we would clearly want to weigh in. And the intent here is not, is to, my intent of saying that why I would, I would look for that additional support, I didn't know that he completed it. The manager hadn't shared that, I don't think, with any of us, that that work had been done, which I had requested. And, uh, well, I, I don't have that in front of me right now. So with that, you know, we're making progress. All I'm saying is you don't get a second chance to make the first impression, Councilman. So the intent is for everybody to weigh in, to try to build the best consensus we can for public safety and, 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 and take, well, action. So I, I think that's everyone's intent up here. So with that, I think you had requested, maybe we would hear something further from, uh, Tri- Mr. Whitehouse?
Yes, he would like to comment.
I mean, we may be breaking with a little protocol, but he was nice to indulge, uh, Councilwoman Gionella or myself at his session.
Hi, I'm Trip Whitehouse. I'm the president of the Board of Education, for those that don't know me. Um, thank you for inviting me to speak. I thought I was just going to be here as, as an interested party.
Pretty passionate.
Would have dressed a little better if I knew.
You look great.
From the standpoint of this process, as council have said, this has been an ongoing issue for a number of years. That in all of our buildings, the, the eight schools here in Scotch Plains, Fanwood School District, that are all located in Scotch Plains, um, Brunner is the most challenging of all from the pickup and drop-off. Um, as has been also stated, there was a, I think, pretty much this proposal a few years back. And, um, for whatever reason, it was deemed that we should continue to try other things than to, um, adjust parking on Homestead. Which we have done, which again, I won't go reiterate what has just been said over the last half hour. Um, so where we are now is, and for the benefit of the council, um, the Board of Education is in support of what is before you. Um, from our business administrator, Buildings and Grounds, our superintendent, Dr. Hayes, as well as speaking for the Board of Education, the, the board members. Um, for the benefit of council and the public, um, we try to be good neighbors. Be it in something to do with cell towers where, close to our schools, where we don't necessarily have a dog in that fight, we still will act as a conduit of information for the folks that live in the area. On this particular issue, there was a proposal that, again, there was a meeting of the Brunner neighborhood. And I stress neighborhood because it's not just Brunner parents. That there was information sent out which showed the proposal that was being discussed that evening, which had, um, the cars, uh, traveling through Redwood and then actually entering the Brunner property from the side. That went to the whole neighborhood while there were Brunner parents and residents of Redwood that were, I think, more well-represented than Homestead residents. That's probably because of what was thrown before them as far as what was going to be discussed. So in regards to, um, Councilman Marcus, your question as to, uh, or your, your request that the neighborhood should be engaged in this, we try our best. When we have a music festival where there's going to be portable lights and noise on the football field, a little labor, a little later than normal, we try to let the, the neighborhood know that something odd is going, or different is going to be happening on a particular night. We do our best to not, if, if something's going to change the quality of the neighborhood, either short-term or long-term, to, to be as open as possible. Um, so towards that end, if going forward, there, this, you're either going to be discussing and either voting on it later in the month, um, just because it's summer, doesn't mean the schools are, aren't, there's not a lot of activity. While the students are, some would say, while the students aren't in session, there's more activity going on within the school district as far as buildings and grounds. So we have the ability to, if, if the preference is being done through the Board of Ed versus the council as far as alerting the neighborhood on there'll be a discussion, either a, an additional meeting or at your next council meeting. I mean, again, it doesn't, doesn't matter to me. In that special meeting where, where Mayor Glover, Councilwoman Gionella attended, um, that wasn't a normal Board of Ed meeting. That was just more an opportunity to get input because that's what we needed. And that's why I think a lot of you are here now, is to provide input to the council. That's the way it should be done, that it's not done by, by government by fiat, be it from the board's side or the council's side. And I applaud you all for being out here to, to, to lend your support or your opinion on, on this issue. So if the council wishes, Board of Ed is, is more than happy to hold additional information, either information giving and receiving sessions or session just to, to hear the input and the concerns of the folks on, on Homestead and the, the larger Brunner community. Um, so to, to, to circle back, from the Board of Ed's standpoint, what is before you, we are in favor of. It may not be the, the last solution to, to put this to bed, but we believe it's better than we are, we are now. And from the standpoint of beginning school in another five or six weeks, where we'll have students boots on the ground, so to speak, um, we're not going to be able to put in sidewalks if, if that were to be the desired outcome or, or widen streets through more concrete. That we believe something needs to be done with the opening of the schools in September. And we believe this is workable for now, with the dialogue continuing, either with the neighborhood, with the council, with the engineering group, or with our law enforcement. Um, again, one final thing. The governing bodies, both the Borough of Fanwood, the Township of Scotch Plains and the Board of Education, do meet regularly in something called a Shared Service Agreement. I'm sure it's been referenced here at council at different times. It's everything from sharing, uh, larger, uh, housing for, for heavy equipment to, um, cohesive buying, to leverage the power of three entities versus each of us replicating the same or duplicating the same thing to, to save us all money on our taxes. Along with the financial side, where we try to leverage our, our power of three, we also look at these logistical things. So we all have pretty good relationships working with one another, again, the Borough, the Township, and the Board of Ed. Mr. Jones, as well as Mayor Glover, were at the last, um, Shared Service Meeting a few weeks back. I too attended, as well as two other board members. With the input of Scotch Plains Law Enforcement, as well as Fanwood Law Enforcement, this, there seemed to have been a, a consensus where there was, there was not a commitment from any council members how they were going to vote. But they did hear, and they did hear from both sides, if you will, of law enforcement. So whereas Fanwood, the building is not in Fanwood per se. It certainly houses Fanwood's, um, residents and students. They do, as Mayor said, want to be actively involved in this. And they have been including, up to and including the law enforcement. So I think when all is said and done, uh, from those that have had their fingers in the pot, there's been a consensus that this is the, the way to go right now, although this may not be the be-all and-all.
So. As, as I said, I think that's an excellent summary of, of what we're all learning and what we're trying to achieve here, so that it services everyone. The only, the, the, if I may ask, follow-up is, there was only one issue that I thought might influence, you know, why we may not want to act right away, was the one that I heard several people make mention to, which is possibly staggering times of the high school, uh, to facilitate, you know, better drop-off, uh, you know, at Brunner. I mean, the point being, this way, to our harshest critics, you know, because all people say we made the worst decision in the world. But we know we're trying to make the best decision based upon what's possible and what we know. That would be one item out there that I'd love for you to weigh in. And maybe our engineer, if he has any thoughts on that.
I don't want to get into educational philosophy at a council meeting.
Yeah.
As compelling as council meetings are, you should hear our Board of Ed meetings. Anyway, um, there has always been talk about high schoolers, teenagers, why are they starting the times that they start? They're the ones that seem to want and need the most sleep. Um, it's been for twelve, thirteen years that I've been on the board, that, that discussion has been ongoing. Quite frankly, when you look at all the after-school activities that really our high schoolers are the most that participate and their interschool scholastic activities. So Scotch Plains can say, "We think it's in the best interest of our high schoolers to start at this time." It works logistically with our elementary schools, possibly our middle schools. And, uh, certainly, from the standpoint of the, the body clocks of, of the children, the young adults that are that age, we think it's educationally sound. You will have, this room would not be big enough just for the football parents to show up to say, "How will we be able to compete against Clark and Westfield and, and anyone in our conference?"
We got fifteen minutes earlier, right?
So, well, I mean, that's, there's the give and take. And, and say, well, what you get from, um, an interscholastic, and, and I'm talking, I'm starting with sports because that's the ones that get the headlines. But anything, Math League, U, uh, Club UN, anything that they're involved in, that they go to another district, unless it is done at a county, a state, or a conference level. You, you, it's always nice to be first, but the, the years that, until everyone else comes on board, I don't think anyone here that has someone, an incoming superstar, if you will, on baseball, soccer, pick anything, if you don't have someone to play against, other than maybe a travel team, you're going to feel cheated. And unless everyone goes on board at the same time, that's been the, what, that's been one of the challenges on staggering from the high school standpoint.
No, no, but I, I think that, listen.
My point is, we, we haven't discussed it in conjunction with the Brunner parking, but these type things have been brought to the table for, again, at least a dozen years that I've been on the, the board. So, I mean, we can revisit them and, and talk about them again. Or if there needs to be an informational, uh, discussion with the Brunner community, we're happy to bring this into play. And, and again, I'm not an educator by any stretch. But I do recall, as I've asked these questions and other board members over the period of time, typically, when a board member has a teenager and they say, "I can't blow that child with dynamite out of bed. Why are they starting so early in the morning in high school? Wouldn't it be more sound to be later?" That's what, that's what.
No, I, I really, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you weighing in on that aspect of it. And my wife is sitting in this room and she could tell you that I've never been an early riser. And I've got the same problem. But, but that's it, so shame on me to suggest someone get up earlier. And I've heard similar studies. But I just want us to say that to the public, we've looked at all of these things.
Yeah, at this point, I think so.
And that, and I think that's reasonable. I wasn't sure we had.
So, I have a question then, as far as the ordinance. Because, um, Councilman Marcus raised a very valid point. And I, I could be wrong, but based on the prior meetings I've attended, I believe that the residents who are here tonight represent essentially Redwood, the Redwood community. Um, the lovely Redwood. So I'm not seeing any faces that I know here from Homestead. So, I'm not seeing any faces that I know here from Homestead, which is a bit of a concern, because I'm not, almost not sure that the Homestead residents know that this conversation is happening. So, but, you know, school opens in September, I get it. Where would we be if we didn't introduce the ordinance today?
Well, then you would introduce it at your August meeting, and it wouldn't, you would have a public hearing in your September meeting, and then 20 days from whenever that September meeting was, it would go into effect, assuming it was passed.
What happens if the ordinance, and if the ordinance is introduced today, it's still time, we still, we do not have to-
Be able to until the 12th.
It does not have to be passed. I mean, I just want to make sure that the public understands the steps.
At least the character, if you have a motion, if you have support to carry, so if you have your introduction, and you can have a public hearing, and if that's a public hearing, you don't have enough information, or, you know, based upon comments, you are carrying, you can have a motion to carry, you don't have a hearing.
Jeff, would this be an ordinance that could qualify after a final reading as an emergency, like to pass with a supermajority, without having to do the 20 day?
That is also true, you have to give a certification. There are certain ordinances where the 20 day waiting period can be waived, it's an emergency situation. Your chief determines it to be an emergency situation.
Well, I think we've got a lot more information tonight than I did even prior to that, and maybe we're breaking with a couple of Robert's rules, but I know we have our engineer here. I would welcome to hear any feedback, you know, that you can, anything you might add to what this discussion has been. I mean, we're here serving the public, so if we break a rule tonight, we're doing it for public's sake.
We had a meeting with the-
Yes, please.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Robert Lyons, I'm the Township Engineer. We had a meeting with the Board of Ed administrator and the principal, and we examined the school properties, the restrictions, and what we did was, we played with a couple layouts of how we could move the cars into the property without making any physical changes to the roads. We also looked at changing the access to, off of Redwood and bringing down alongside the north side of the school. This site is very, very tight in all aspects. We looked at actually bringing the cars in off of Homestead and down the south side of the school, but that's sort of counter to the access points into the building. It probably made it more sense on that side, because then the people unloading could get the kids out the right side of the car, the passenger side of the car, except for there's no access points. It's also a very steep grade down to the school, and you'd end up with a driveway immediately next to the building, then you have concerns of exhaust fumes, things like that. On the opposite side of the building, when we looked at it, we did come up with a scenario of bringing the cars in on Cedar Brook, building a new piece of driveway from Cedar Brook into the parking lot. It's close to a playground. It also then forces all the teachers to be there, to get the parking spots before you can actually start letting the students in. It causes you to have to have all the kids get out of the car on the left-hand side. So, there's a whole series of problems. The other problem is, once you get back to Westfield Road, you have two streets that almost come in from across the street into the school, so the geometry of those intersections is very complicated in a traffic movement, because if a car, if you're only going to force them to go right, people are immediately going to make a left down Walden, and that would cause backups and delays, et cetera. It was an exceptionally challenging site to try to evaluate. The recommendation that we provided the Board of Ed was to come in off of Redwood with the new driveway access road, and along the north side of the building. It wasn't a hundred percent perfect fit, but it was the best that we could come up with.
Certainly, it's been another one, that was proposed, where, as you alluded to, coming along that side street, and, you know, coming down that, you know, incline, and I think it really could kids, and parents, you know, at risk, so.
There's almost nothing you can do in the front of the building, because it would cause all the cars to queue on Westfield Road.
On Westfield.
Which you really don't have the space, it's a heavily traveled road. So, sort of got locked into the two side streets as the alternatives. The no parking that is being proposed is, appears, you know, to me, to be probably the best stopgap measure, if you want to call it that, that's available, if you're going to do something.
Short of moving the school, of course.
Short of moving the school, that's a good idea. But, there's really very few solid alternatives, you know, once you start putting cars into the playground area-
That's smart.
You know, even if you close that off during the school hours, somebody may still come in there and not recognize that they're in, you know, a driveway, and they're next to you, they're in the parking area, or a playground area.
I'm familiar with the area, and that would not be a good move at all, just like the other option you just discussed, would be not a smart move. So, we're landlocked, is basically we've come to, and what we wanted to do, and I know you're going to be here, was to have you weigh in, and certainly with Mr. Whitehouse here. This was a pretty civil exchange of good ideas, and recognizing it's been around for a while, it's the Whitehouse, it doesn't seem like there's a whole lot of options, Chief, short of moving the school. So, are there any other comments? I mean, will, this is an action item for our business meeting that follows this. Please.
I would just, again, like to thank Mr. Whitehouse for expressing his views coming from the Board of Ed regarding this. He's always very accommodating and helpful, and it's greatly appreciated. You did mention Trip about engaging in some type of further communication with the nearby residents, particularly those on Homestead. I think that's a great idea. I would wholeheartedly support that, and would greatly appreciate it. And the only question I have about it is how we would be able to just coordinate it, at least get some confirmation through the Township, that something is being done just to provide this information to the residents, so they can become aware of it. Whatever action we take tonight remains to be seen, but clearly, if action is taken, you know, I think in fairness to them, they really need to know about it in advance, so they can prepare themselves for the upcoming school year. But, again, your comments are greatly appreciated, as is Mr. Lyons, and the Chief, of course, for everyone's input on this issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good discussion, everybody, nice civil conversation, which looks like we might have a solution at hand finally, Chief, to our parents, and to the children as well. So, with that, we're going to move on. Council discussion items, Scotch Plains means business.
I need my iPad back.
You need an iPad back here.
So, this was something that I had sent, given to members of the council earlier in the, in the spring. I wanted to have a conversation about really embracing the idea of adopting some of the existing programs that could be more helpful for the downtown, rather than looking to, again, recreate our own vision as far as starting to compile resources and work at this piecemeal, when there are more systemic approaches that are already out there. I know that you all have had this for some time. I tried to be as thorough as possible, but I understand that it doesn't touch on all of the individual points that would really go into adopting the Main Street program, but I was curious to hear your thoughts, but, I mean, I, you know, my thoughts are there, they're written down, you saw them. I'm more interested in hearing from the rest of you about what you thought of the idea of really looking at the Main Street program, and looking at some of the other ideas as far as working to make sure that the streets are more complete in the downtown area as well, as far as accessibility to pedestrians, et cetera.
Anyone have any comments?
Yes, Mayor. As I'm looking through this, and I think there was a brief conversation related to this, this kind of looks like the type of work that the Downtown Development Committee is work focused on. For those that aren't aware, we actually created a committee in response to the fact that we couldn't seem to keep politics out of the evaluation of ways in which we could develop the downtown and/or help to expand growth of business for our downtown merchants. This council, the majority of this council voted to put together an ad hoc committee whose focus is to look at the different opportunities, whether it be for development, whether it be for improvement, whether it be for reconfiguration, if that's something that they come up with of our downtown, to help attract new merchants, and to help attract more people shopping in the downtown. So, as I, as I look at this, I think there might be some great ideas in here. I think that perhaps this should be something that we should refer to the Downtown Development Committee for their review and incorporation into their conversations. I mean, I know Mr. Lair is a member of that committee, is this the kind of thing that you guys on this Downtown Development Committee are engaged in and discussing, or are these outside what you've come up with so far?
Interestingly enough, a lot of the recommendations here, we've been talking about a lot of these things, so, so, we would invite, you know, the report to come over, but some of it, we've already been talking about, and there'll be, ultimately be a report to the governing body.
So, I guess my, my thoughts were, and I tried to really make them clear when I first, and I don't have the date in front of me, when I first provided this to you, you know, you, you know, there's a saying about committees, and you're right, that it was a vote for the, that had the majority, you know, take minute, lose, takes minute, loses hours, I think you've all heard the saying, right? Committee, okay, all right, so committees, you have committee meetings, you take minutes, you lose hours, get it? Okay. So, the issue that I have, that I really just want to make sure that we're clear on, is when you look at the downtown, that's a policy decision. You know, there's been a lot of conversation recently in this room, and, you know, outside of this room, about the role of ad hoc committees, and quite frankly, how some of their work has been really completely discarded. So, there's some irony in the fact that we have some ad hoc committees who have really toiled at things, and nothing that they've recommended, quite frankly, has been considered by this council. And I'm sure that it's very frustrating and disappointing to people who give up time and possibly income, you know, for various jobs, you know, to be here, and to really dedicate their interests and their talents to the township, to then not have any of their ideas really come to fruition. So, I'm sure that you have a number of very good people on that committee. I know there was one in particular that I was very much in support of, but my concern would be that, given essentially what we've done with the guidance provided to us by the Technology Committee, and given what we've done with the guidance provided by the Cultural Arts Committee, to then simultaneously create another committee that would only be able to make policy decisions to us, who have been elected to make policy, and make policy recommendations for us to make policy decisions, seems, I don't want to use the word disingenuous, because I don't, I don't believe it was a disingenuous effort, it just, and schizophrenic sounds odd here, too, but we're doing one thing on one hand and doing another thing on another hand, almost seeming like it has to do with the membership of the committee. So, my thoughts were, the Main Street program is something that exists. I would love to take credit for these ideas, they're not mine. I mean, these ideas are a cohesive program that exists, that towns very much like Scotch Plains have adopted, it has assisted them in securing additional grant funds, it really in many ways speaks to a lot of the things that I've heard this evening. Scotch Plains has a very rich, rich history, that if we really worked to celebrate those pieces of history, instead of becoming a financial drain on the Township, they become a considerable asset to the community. They enrich the value of our homes, they enrich the value of our downtown, it draws people into the Township. We look at things, I have found in my time on the Township, I believe with the very best of intentions. The problem is that things become very fragmented and very disjointed. I think even the conversation we were just having is a pretty, pretty good example of that. We have a wealth of resources that are available to us in New Jersey and even beyond New Jersey, but part of the problem is we haven't capitalized what's available, on what's available to us in Scotch Plains. So, you know, maybe it's part of a more broad conversation, what is the role of ad hoc committees going to be? But I know that, I know that you've been privy to conversations about the cultural arts and about the technology. I just would feel very saddened, I mean, I think there's a member of that committee who possibly spends many months even out of the state. I would hate for him to have to spend time working towards something to make a recommendation to this council, and us really discard that, the way some of the other committees have been discarded. So, just my thoughts were, maybe it really is, if this is going to be a way that we go, to really kind of start to look at those committees a little bit differently. Maybe we should be consistent, and start to really take some initiative as a council in doing things for the downtown, and really look at this Main Street program. You guys have had this for a while, I was kind of hoping that you would have read up on it. I wanted this to be a real conversation, not, you know, let's take it back to the committee.
Well, I appreciate that. However, as we had in a previous conversation where we wanted to delay parking restrictions for further reports and studies, despite the fact that the traffic officer, the engineer, the Board of Ed, and everybody else seems to be on board with it, this committee was specifically created, and was specifically chartered to remove the politics and the grandstanding from the process. I appreciate the fact that you feel strongly about this. I'm a little confused about how we highlight the uniqueness of Scotch Plains when we're talking about a template approach that the Main Street program is about, but I will say that I think that if we truly want to make progress in the downtown, it's incumbent upon us to really do the research and allow the process to unfold with a group of people that have specific experiences in this process that they bring to the table. We've got developers, we've got land use attorneys, we've got planners, we've got attorneys that are business owners, and I think that probably in that collective, there's more knowledge and experience in looking at something like this than any one of us sitting up here, and I believe that it's incumbent upon us for a lasting and long-term solution to allow that process to unfold. I, I, like I said, I mean, I don't think there's any, I, I'm not suggesting that these are bad ideas, I think, but rather than having two disjointed approaches to this, this should be referred to them so that we have one approach and we have a, listen, all voices being, you know, thrown into this discussion. But, having said that, I mean, I think everyone that was appointed to that committee was very clear as to the terms of being appointed, and that was, the governing body has no obligation to take whatever recommendations they make and implement them. They might come back and say, "We want to relocate the Taj Mahal here." That doesn't mean we're going to do it. So, I, I, I do appreciate your effort on this, but it would be my opinion and perspective that we refer this to them, rather than having duplication of effort in this regard.
I do appreciate your comments. I would just wonder then, why this hasn't, wasn't referred to them two to three months ago when I first provided it? If, if we were really genuinely wanting to give them this information, why? Main Street is something that I actually believe, you may have been at a SIT meeting when I first raised this idea. It's out there, it's not something that we need to manufacture, and these are ideas that we can start to really embrace. If the intention was to provide it to them, why are we waiting to July 22nd to even begin the conversation to do so? What, I mean...
Can I say something? And I'm not here, and I'm speaking, I don't give an opinion unless you ask me my legal opinion as your attorney. But I'm not speaking as an attorney, but as an appointed representative of the ad hoc committee, and I'm listening to all of this, a lot of these ideas, Joe Doyle already brought this up during the ad hoc committee. The issues, a number of the things that are in this report, surprisingly, have we've discussed already.
So, Mr. Lehrer, with all due respect, Mr. Lehrer, Mr. Lehrer... If you're not speaking as the attorney...
You interrupted the councilwoman to begin with.
Well, I thought she was done. I thought she was done.
She was not finished.
So, please, sir, please, why didn't you let her finish first? I thought she was done, Mayor.
Sir, she was not.
I thought she was done.
Because I, I...
I apologize, I thought she was done.
Well, then, that's fine. But she wasn't done. She was, you, you cut her off in mid-sentence, okay? And, and I just, listen, we had a very civil conversation, albeit now we wanted to go back with regards to the school parking, to what people were thinking.
Mayor, she's attempted to diminish the role of the ad hoc committee.
No, I don't think she's, sir, sir, I don't think she...
Oh, I can tell you that I heard it, as an objective listener.
Sir, sir, I didn't hear that, sir.
It sounded like she was attempting to diminish that role.
Sir, and furthermore, you serve, you know, sir, if you want to go to the mic and talk at the next meeting, you can. You're speaking as yourself now, and not as this township attorney.
You know, I, I...
So, I would greatly appreciate, sir, you and I have a good relationship.
Yes, we do, but I've spent weeks and weeks and weeks on this committee.
I understand that, but it don't, you must know better than me, sir, that this is totally inappropriate. The fact is, you said, "I'm going to speak as a member of the committee."
No, it's inappropriate what she's saying right now, because my time is valuable, and for me to go to these meetings and to listen to this...
Listen, listen, enough. I am calling to order this meeting again, enough. I think Robert's rules allows me to do that. So, please. Now, if someone else would like to, if she would like to finish her thought, and I respect your sentiment, but I may have something to weigh on this, too. So, let us all have, you know, an opportunity to speak. Would someone else like to comment?
Yeah, I just would like to, that I would like to speak to Mr. Lehrer's comments, then.
This is crazy.
I, I, I actually was trying to do exactly the opposite, then, of what was being, of the way, I, it came across the wrong way, then, if that's the way you took it.
I, I exactly took it that way.
Okay.
Well, let's get on the right page.
Okay, I think I even spoke to the fact that people's time is very valuable. There's some level of frustration because of the inconsistency in the way we are treating ad hoc committees. And that's the point that I was going toward, is I wouldn't want to see a situation where this committee spends a lot of time making recommendations, and then those recommendations not be followed at all by the township. We haven't heard anything about the progress or work that's being done, so it's difficult just by nature of that alone, because this committee, and I know that Councilman Vastine was speaking in jest, but what if, what if there were, what if, things being recommended, that this council was going to have no, no inclination whatsoever of supporting, and there may be a tangent that they've gone off on? I think the point for articulation is probably a really good one, and I, I mean, really, I do apologize, because my exact intention was the opposite of the way it was, the way it was interpreted. And I'm not, I'm, I'm not, I'm not looking for an argument, I just, you know, I just really want to do good things for Scotch Plains. And I, I want to get to work, and I want to do something, and we've been talking about the downtown, and I really enjoyed some very positive conversations that I had with Councilman Vastine about a lot of these things last year. And I'm, I'm feeling somewhat frustrated by the lack of communication from the committee, and I, I just want to help, that's more than anything else.
Thank you. No, no, this is not for public comment yet. No, I, I, I really think we, no, write it, but I, I, I mean, I know I'm saying so rude. You know, we've taken enough, this, Mr. Lasavia, I, I'm going to respectfully say no. And you know, you hope you'll respect that, please. Allow me to. I, I, I understand. Mr. Lasavia, please allow me to respectfully say no. And, you know, I wouldn't do that if, we've got to, we've got to conduct this meeting, please. Please, Mr. Lasavia. Thank you, sir. Please. Thank you, sir. Councilman was about to speak, thank you.
All right, well, I, I want to assure councilwoman that I read this information in the packet, and I read it the last time, too. And my thoughts are that I think that there's some worthy and interesting information in this packet, and I'm going to state the obvious, and that is, whatever we can do to help improve the downtown is obviously a good thing. We have created a Downtown Development Committee, Mr. Lehrer is a member of that committee. I think that it would be appropriate to refer this report to that committee for their consideration. I think this is something that they should discuss and review, and obviously report back to us. Earlier today, I had the opportunity and the pleasure of attending a function in, in Westfield that was sponsored by the Greater Westfield Chamber of Commerce. I met several people there, including the mayor of other towns, mayors of other towns, mayor of Garwood, a member of the Garwood Chamber of Commerce, talked about a lot of the good things they've done in Garwood. I met several members of the Greater Westfield Chamber of Commerce, were doing things, operating their, their business district in Westfield, and what I can tell you is that there are many people who are tuned in to Scotch Plains, interested in Scotch Plains, desiring to, desirous of talking to Scotch Plains, and to Scotch Plains business groups, and assisting Scotch Plains, and helping us improve our business district, and determining ways to do that. So, I put that out there for whatever it's worth, because I, I, I see our role up here as the council to offer our advice and to hopefully provide some tools to the appropriate resource that will consider things that can be done to improve our business district and our business community. And I think anything that, that aids in that effort is, is worthy of consideration. And when the appropriate time comes, I'm sure that the Development Committee will report back to us, and we'll be able to offer our assistance and aid them in whatever way we can, and take whatever appropriate decisions need to be made at that time. So, I appreciate the information in this, this packet. I hope that it is of good use to the committee, and I look forward to getting their, their feedback and a report back from them about what's being considered. And I offer those other possibilities, and I'd be happy to share, you know, the contacts that I've discussed those items with to the committee, so they can hopefully move forward and that we can, we can do something to, to improve the downtown business district in a meaningful way as soon as we can.
Thank you, sir.
May I weigh in this for sake of completeness and providing the clear direction of the majority? It's my opinion as well that, that the appropriate place for these ideas, like, whatever we also said, there's a lot of good ideas in here, the appropriate place for that in the process right now is with the downtown. I do want to also address the point of the councilwoman in regards to other ad hoc or other subcommittees of this council. I think it's important to delineate the fact that, first off, we, this is, the agenda has on it a discussion of Scotch Plains Means Business, not the process of ad hoc committees, so I don't know why we're even discussing that. But given that, I would draw the clear delineation that this downtown subcommittee is an ad hoc committee created by the majority of this council for the purpose of giving policy direction to the council. The other subcommittees cited, to the best of my recollection, have not provided any policy, policy recommendations to this council. They have made it, perhaps made advice to the management of the town about operations of the town, but they haven't made any policy recommendations that have come across my desk. So, they're two separate things as far as I'm concerned. But again, to the point of this, this particular plan, again, I think there's a lot of good things in here. I, I, you know, I think looking into the downtown and how we can revitalize it in a way that potentially boosts ratables and brings more people in for our existing businesses is a great thing, and I think that's why, why we went out of our way to create this ad hoc committee earlier in the year, and I look forward to its recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you. I think everyone's been heard from, and I, I just would like to weigh in and that we could move on, because we have another meeting following this. Councilman, I, I believe the reason ad hoc came up was because Councilman Vastine referenced ad hoc committees, just, just here for the record. And, and, and to the point, we know that we do have ad hoc committees within the township that supports us in several ways. We also know that the manager is not one who's a big proponent of ad hoc committees. In fact, we've disbanded our Technology Committee for what it's worth, and certainly, we've disregarded the, the Cultural Arts Committee. That said, I think, you know, you have to respect the fact that, yes, the majority of this council, you know, voted, you know, a resolution to create this committee, as we do other committees. And there has been no communications from them as yet. You know, how do I know, how does anyone of us know that I'm working on eminent domain in our community? I mean, to walk in and take, you know, you know, I've heard in the past here, "Well, our businesses, our buildings are too small, they should be third stories high." You know, those are owned, those buildings are owned by individuals, you know, who bought them, if not built them, and owned them. I can't say, you know, what this committee, quite frankly, could be doing. Maybe they have thoughts that, you know, like, and Long Branch, you know, "We've got to really turn the downtown upside down, and, you know, let's not rule out eminent domain." So, I don't think it's a stretch to say that it wouldn't be a bad idea to have the committee that's been operating, you know, for maybe two months now? Maybe two months now, to give the council and the community a briefing on, and quite frankly, you know, what they're doing. You know, as for this, you know, Main Street group of folks, they are very successful, okay? They're not here to run your town, they're here to work with you, okay? And I think Westfield has been one of the beneficiaries. We always hear how good Westfield is. Well, I would, I, again, it's nice to have committees, but, you know, it is a democracy, and, you know, sometimes you get some better input when you listen to more than one person. I can't fathom why we would not entertain having this ad hoc committee come in and speak to us about what they're doing. They should, this is a serious business, you've heard everyone say that before me tonight, and entertain listening to the Main Street folks. What's the downside? What is the downside? You know, if someone feels that it's not necessary, they have to work through that ad hoc committee, I say, "Shame on you, we should have these folks talk to us directly." So, I'm sure this conversation will continue, but I would be one who would support, at least, at the very least, you know, having a one-on-one conversation with them. I've spoken to them in the past and, and tried to bring it to this council under different management, and it died on the vein, but, you know, don't talk to me about Westfield, and then not talk to me about, you know, the Main Street business folks. That said...
Mayor, if I may?
I'm going to, I'm going to move on.
I would like to make a motion. I would like to make a motion that we refer this plan and the Main Street organization to the Downtown Development Committee for review, and whatever they would like.
I don't, I don't know if we need a motion to do that, sir.
There's a motion on the floor, Mayor, and...
But do we need a motion to refer information?
It doesn't matter whether you need one, there's a motion on the floor.
Okay, I'm just asking you.
That's right. There's a motion on the floor.
Well, I think we're all in favor of sending it, and I'd like to have a motion, and I'd like it seconded.
There's a, there's a motion on the floor, there's a...
May we have a, we have a roll call?
Mrs. Gilanella?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Marcus?
Aye.
Mr. Vastine?
Aye.
Mayor Glover?
Aye. Well, that was easy enough, right, folks? All right, let's move along. I would like to make a motion that would suggest that within the next, at our next meeting on the 12th, that the, this ad hoc committee, okay, address the council and the public on, you know, what actions they've taken today. Is there a second?
Not a second.
I would ask for a roll call.
Can we have comment before we vote on it?
We can, we can be here all night. With all due respect, if you want to comment on it, we can comment on it, but I mean, when are we going to...
You make a motion, that we have the right to comment on it.
Let's, let's have, let's have a comment, I'd love to hear your comments.
Okay, I don't think it's an outlandish...
No, 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 by all means.
I mean, the motion that, that you articulated is to have the committee come before us.
Yes.
I, I don't know, I think, in, in, do, with all due respect to them, we need to be a little more specific. I don't expect necessarily the entire committee to come here.
They can have a representative, sir.
Okay.
And they should speak to what they've done.
Maybe I can finish my thought.
Please, I apologize.
That's what I'm driving at. And what I'm suggesting is, if you want to invite an individual or group of individuals, I think it really should be up to them to, to determine for themselves who they want to present to us, to give us, you know, an update as to what they're doing, I think that's fine, you know, rather than to just simply say, you know, "We want to direct the committee to come here and tell us what they're doing."
If that makes you feel better.
It does, it does make me feel better.
With all due respect, I'm not going to tell them what we, I'm just, I, I welcome the opportunity, I'm happy you feel better, because so do I, to have some representative from this group, if not all of them, why not, come here, and, and I have no objection to them sending a representative, two representatives, three, or the entire committee, and let the good people of Scotch Plains know what they've been working on for the last two months.
Mayor, if I may?
Another comment, please.
Well, my, my, my comment is this. The language of this resolution to create this ad hoc committee was very specifically and precisely written to prevent political interference with the process. Now, I know it's got to be frustrating to not have all the information that's out there. It must keep you awake at night.
Listen, there's no reason for you to personalize issues, Mr. Lehrer.
Excuse me, point of order, excuse me.
I mean, you're getting chucked out of this, too.
I'm speaking, please.
Because I agree, I can only tell you that we've attempted to be apolitical and gone out of our way to do that, as possible.
Well, good, in that case, let the public hear.
And I think that ultimately, a work in progress at this point serves a negative value, simply to satisfy your curiosity.
My curiosity.
And/or to somehow interject an opinion or a perspective into that process. I do not support them coming before this council at this point. I think, how many meetings? Three, four?
We've had four meetings, and we have one this Thursday.
Okay. So, you know, I, I look at it like a loaf of bread. You start off with the dough, the dough rises, you put it in the oven, you end up with a loaf of bread. Halfway through the process, doesn't look like...
Halfway through the process doesn't look like anything like what it's gonna look like in the end. Excuse me. You know, I love you, but you gotta hold your comments.
I, I think they're wondering how you make bread, because, but anyway.
Excuse me. If you're gonna be rude, Mr. Mayor-
No, I'm not being rude. By all means, please continue.
Reserve your comments till the end.
There'll be plenty.
Is that to interject yourself into the process at this point right now is to look at a open process that's right now in the process, putting out creative thought and not eliminating anything in their thought process to now bringing it to the light of day, which in my opinion, if someone gets ahold of something that was just a thought but never intended to be reality, and that becomes the gossip around town, I think it hurts the process rather than helps the process. I do not support bringing them in front of the inquisition-
Inquisition.
-for the simple purpose of satisfying curiosity. I would like to wait and see what they've come up with after they've had sufficient time to go through this process.
Boy, have we heard that before. So much for transparency. So much for transparency. Have we all now made our comments on this, known? Because I have a motion, I have a motion, and I would have a second. Mr. Jones, would you like to speak to our transparency?
Thank you, I appreciate the opportunity. I want to just reiterate the points, Mayor. I think this whole conversation is pretty emblematic of why this process was set up to remove the politics from the process. So I think that speaks very clearly to that whole point. Secondly, I find it ironic, Mr. Mayor, that you're calling on a member of the commission to come and speak here for this council, when previously one of the members who just did attempt to speak to it, you shut him down. So I just find that ironic. I'll be voting against this motion. Thank you.
You know what? The one thing I will say is that, so much for transparency. So we, we have a motion, we have a second.
Has the motion been revised? Who is-
It has been revised, Mr. Deputy Mayor, to suggest that they can send a representative. They could send two, they could send three, but I would like to see one person here just to brief us after having met for two months. Where are they going? What are they thinking? They don't have to give their definite plans, folks. You deserve that, ladies and gentlemen. You deserve that.
With, with indulgence, Mayor, could we ask a member of that committee what his thoughts are, or what this would do on the process?
No, no, we're not entertaining that right now. We have a motion, we have a second, everyone has made a comment. I'm asking for the roll call, please.
It's really inappropriate to, I, I have to tell you, Mayor, that, that what you're asking us to do is to go off half-cocked. We are making some very good progress, some wonderful things, and talk about transparency. It's an ad hoc committee, it's not subject to the Open Public Meetings Act. You've asked us to be created on the land use specialist, you've asked Mr. Chekio, who is a, a, a tax specialist, a land use developer-
Great.
And we have come up with some wonderful ideas.
I'm looking forward to hearing some of them.
Now you're cutting me off. And, and what I'm asking you to do, and I apologize for my comment before, but what I'm asking you to do is give us an opportunity to fully develop our, our, our report, and to go off half-cocked, I think that you will have a, a number of people who will, on that committee, who will resist it, because we haven't fully developed our ideas, our concept, but we will ultimately issue a report, and that report will be open to the public, it will be submitted to the governing body, it will be subject to Oprah, it will be, it will be as transparent as you, you want. But I think that to ask us to come right now is premature.
Well, that's, I, 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 since you were directing it to me. I don't think it's premature. I don't think it's half-cocked. I'm the mayor of this township, I don't know what you folks are working on, you could, for all I know, be working on something called eminent domain.
Eminent domain is not on our radar screen.
Well, you know what? I would love for a disre-
Not even on our radar screen.
Well, I think that's wonderful. I would like for a representative to come here. They don't have to give us finite information, and I don't want to ponder this until nine o'clock. I've made a request that someone from this committee, that you all majority have set up, you know, to come here and just to tell us, "How am I doing?" Okay?
We're doing great.
What are we doing? That's great. Well, then you can be the representative as far as I'm concerned, but I think at this point, I think we've discussed this ad nauseam. I've modified my request to reflect your request. Call the roll, I'm calling the roll.
Mrs. Gilanella?
Aye.
Mr. Jones?
No.
Mr. Marcus?
Who said this job was gonna be easy?
It's not easy, sir.
Aye.
Mr. Vastine?
No.
Mayor Glover?
Aye. I expect that we will have a representative here to just share us what they're working on. Thank you very much for that. I don't see any other business required by the council at this point. Can we take a two-minute adjournment if anyone wants to use the restrooms, get a drink of water before we begin? It is, from my, what I can see, without glasses, it's about 20 to 9. 20 to 9, it says up there, okay? Say, three minutes, five minutes? Five-minute break, but we're gonna start properly at a quarter to 9. We're gonna gavel the meeting open. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
No.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.